Okay, welcome to our Monday, October thirtieth work session. It is twelve forty. We're just a little bit late this morning. Uh, we're starting our work session this morning. I'm Commissioner Gage for all be conducting with me is Commissioner Sharon Bollos. And Commissioner Jim Harvey. We're gonna start our discussion this morning with uh, action for approval of the minutes for the work session held on October ninth, twenty twenty-three and October sixteen, twenty twenty-three.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye motion carries minutes are approved as read for those two dates. Let's now go to our next discussion item regarding the twenty twenty-three budget change and third quarter financial results. And we have with us Mr. Scott Park.
If you wouldn't mind, Commissioner, would you minimize the the window up there?
That's the one that
The one of all of us.
Commissioner Harvey's pretty face.
Yeah. Okay, I appreciate it.
He's gonna not feel good about that.
So in in the past, normally I present to you both the quarterly budget amendments and then also our financial results. Uh, because we had the public hearing schedules last week. This meeting was actually scheduled last week. Work session got canceled. I met with Commissioner Farrar and Commissioner Bowles individually on those budget changes. Um, there were only two that actually ended up using fund balance. We've talked about, we've talked about them before. One was the transfer station for the the asphalt repairs that we did. Um, a little advanced from when we originally planned, and then the other one was the public defenders. Pulling down some additional money because their appeals are higher and we don't have a choice. It's a statutory requirement. Everything else was covered with additional revenues, grant revenue or fee revenue. So I just wanted to focus today on the third quarter financial results. So let's just jump into them. So I like to show this slide just to kind of give you how the economy is coming and pull this down every month from the Bureau of Labor Statistics. Unemployment rate now is over three percent in Weaver County, three point one percent, which is nice. I should, I careful I always say that. It's nice because there's not a huge there. There are actually some workers that are out there that are available to take jobs. And so we're seeing more people apply for our jobs and we're seeing people actually come to our.
We were down to one point eight, one point nine there for a while.
We were, we were in the twos for a long time. I don't remember getting below the two.
Brought up one point nine, but that's okay.
Well, the uh, the, you know, full employment is five percent. So we're still, still very, very strong, still very competitive labor market. It's just not as bad as it was. It's still bad, I would say. It's just less bad if that.
Less bad, okay.
Yep. So and then the um, month over month change in the employment cost index, which is what it costs uh, businesses to have employees. It's still fairly high, a little over, you know, it's just under five percent, but it's coming down from its peak of six and a half percent. So we're headed in the right direction. We're seeing some positive signs that way. Um, inflation is starting to tell a little bit of a different story though. So um, I dropped off the mountain inflation versus the nation's inflation that the lines paralleled each other so much. I don't think there's this big difference. I think one of these tells the story of the other. But uh, you can see back in May, we were headed down. Inflation was kind of coming under control and we thought maybe we're gonna get closer to that two percent the feds want. And we've actually seen um, a a shift and we're headed back up a little bit. So we're still experiencing those inflationary pressures. Uh, we're still having cost of wages go up. Uh, we're still seeing price of fuel go up. There's, there's lots of things. So we're, we're still not where we, the feds say they want us to be. So we're um, the economists that we listen to, Zions Bank, Wells Fargo, they're predicting that the feds are gonna continue to raise interest rates, which will continue to tap that break on the economy. So we don't anticipating large increases in the number of transactions being recorded at the surveyor's office, for example.
I don't disagree with that.
Uh, building starts, you know, building inspections, engineering permits and fees. We're not seeing any dramatic increases in those in a near future. And then we're not seeing a big shift in uh, so no new shift in big in property tax growth, if that makes sense.
MLS came out with stats, what, last week or the week before? You probably saw it. Lowest volume for the MLS was at front regional um, for ten years.
Hmm. Is that just thing and selling? Or is it just selling?
Selling, yeah. Lowest volume of total number, total number of sales.
That'll drive costs down.
Yeah. You'd think so, but it sure hasn't had too much impact yet. Well, the, the reason for it is that because of these interest rates, nobody's gonna sell. Oh, because you know, a lot of those people have two, three, four percent mortgages. They're not gonna go out and sell and get into an eight or eight and a half percent mortgage. So it's twofold. There's no inventory because people aren't moving up on that. So this goes to the governor's statement that came out last week saying, you've got to start creating housing from an affordable. So it's gotta be new. Unfortunately, gotta be new housing. So. But anyway, sorry.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's, that's the same thing we're seeing. And so we're not anticipating
Yeah.
A big increase in in property tax due to new growth. Now, there is that push for affordable housing. Um, a lot of those are built in with CRAs or the project areas where we don't even get the full tax increment when you build that new
Right.
unit. So that's, we're just, I mean, we're watching it. It is what it is. We, we react to that as best we can, but inflation is still high. So what I'm saying is as well, you know, while our, we're coming down from peak inflation and peak un- or peak employment, if I can say it that way, um, we're still experiencing these pressures. It's still something that we are watching closely. Um, and trying to be conservative and handle.
Hasn't gone away.
Yeah, hasn't gone away.
Okay.
So I was actually kind of disappointed on this slide. I was really hoping to see that our sales tax.
Yeah.
So I've, I've showed you this chart for the last few months. And I keep hoping that this number right here, this one hundred point three percent is gonna be a hundred and three or a hundred and four. Somewhere around there and we are just not seeing it. I just don't think that we're gonna get any, we're not gonna have any significant growth over twenty twenty-two's numbers. I'm anticipating now twenty twenty-three will end the same as twenty twenty-two. Normally, you know, four percent growth is amazing. So twenty nineteen, that was a nice decent growth. Um, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, that was just crazy growth. Twenty twenty-two even was crazy growth. I was hoping we would settle back down to that, you know, four percent growth, four to five percent. Uh, we're just not gonna see it this year.
So no new growth in sales tax.
I'm not anticipating any, even if we had banner collections the last three months. It's really not gonna move the needle.
Scott, this is year over year, right? Year over year.
Yes, so Jan- so I'm showing you the collections, January to October for each of those years.
Right, so, so a hundred, it's a hundred percent of what twenty twenty-two was.
Yes.
So we still, if you put that on a graph, it still shows us going up. I mean, we've had growth in the one, two, three, four, five, over the last five years, we've grown.
Yes, so we would be shooting up like this, but now we've kind of flattened. So that, that line went up and now we're, now we're just straight, no new growth.
Okay.
So yes, we're, we're no new growth from the twenty twenty-two number, but the twenty-two, twenty-two number was higher than twenty twenty-one, which was higher than twenty twenty. So yes, we're at a higher level of sales tax revenue.
Okay.
We have allocated a lot of that to help us fund um, our compensation increases and other things in the past. We've spent you know, a good portion of that money ongoing. Um, so I'm hoping to see in twenty twenty-four um, growth of about three percent is what the state is predicting, three point two percent. I'm hoping to see the same thing. Um, we'll watch it. Our fund balance is sufficiently high that even if we were off by twenty-five percent of our sales tax, even if we missed three or four million dollars, we still have a sufficient fund balance that wouldn't affect us.
Remind me when the truth and taxation hearing is?
In the twenty-eighth of November, November twenty, Tuesday after election.
And it would be, it's in the evening, correct?
It is at six P M.
So we have two in a row, one at six, then the next one, thank you.
Yep, two, two in a row.
Evening meetings in a row.
We have
Actually on this.
On the twenty-first?
On the fifth.
Oh, fifth, yeah, okay.
We'll actually have two meetings that day.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll have a morning and we'll have one in.
Right. The fifth is when we canvas the results as well. So that's gonna be the evening meeting?
We'll do that in the morning, we have two.
Okay, you're doing that in the morning still.
Because that's our um, veterans.
Presentation. That's what that day was. I was thinking.
So that's why we have two meetings.
Yeah. Okay. And just while we're mentioning that, you know, the, in the past, we've not approved the budget on the night meeting, the twenty-eighth in this instance, or the tax increase. We've usually just set that for, in this instance, it would be December twelfth, so two weeks later. There's nothing that says we can't adopt the final budget on the twenty-eighth in that hearing if you want. Um, we just haven't done that because we go, usually we've made tweaks and changes and I had to go back and cascade those through the budget. So if we choose to lower the tax rate or change the tax rate at all, I'd ask that we, you can approve the resolution for the tax rate, but don't approve the final budget for two weeks to give me a chance to, to work all those numbers.
We know to do that, what our second meeting in December.
Yeah, that's historically when we've done it.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so I just wanna show you what, where we are in terms of our funds. So the state law mandates a format. I always print it. I always bring it with me and I hardly ever show it to you because I think these are, it, it's it's not very user friendly. Uh, but I just kind of want to show you that year over year, so blue is twenty twenty-one. And this is a percent of total budget. So I tried to factor out, you know, dips in COVID or, or changes and big things like that. So you can just kind of see what we were expecting to where we're actually at. So we're a little bit lower this year than we have in the last few years primarily because of sales tax in the general fund. Our culture parks and recreation, actually, we had some additional revenue, grant revenue that came in twenty twenty-two. So that's why that bump went up to forty-six percent, but otherwise, culture parks and rec is right where we would expect it to be for this time of the year. And then our municipal services fund is actually down a little bit, and that's primarily because our business inspection fee revenue is down and our permit revenue is down. All those permits are down. We're not building as many homes. But nothing too worrying. Our, our fund balances are healthy and even if this is how we ended the year, you know, with these same percentages, we would be, we would be fine per year. Whoops. In terms of expenses, so salaries and benefits, we're a little bit ahead on expenses this year. Um, we have smaller amounts of payroll savings than we've had in previous years, which means we are able to attract and retain some of those employees. So that's a good thing. You would expect three quarters of the way through the year to be at about seventy-five percent. So uh, we're still gonna experience some significant payroll savings, but not as much as in prior years. I think that's a good thing. We're keeping our staff longer. Travel and training, uh, twenty twenty-one was a, a low year. People were still not traveling much for COVID and so we're right back to where we'd expect to be at this time of the year. We have a lot of trainings in the fall and then we have some that pop up in the winter in this fourth quarter. So it doesn't spend evenly through the year. Equipment and debt, that one is really, really variable just based off of when we can actually get the things we order. So we've ordered things sometimes a year and a half ago, and when it comes, we pay for it. So um, I'm not worried about anything on equipment and debt. It's thirty percent. We'll be closer to our full budget by the end of the year, assuming we get the goods delivered. And then our current expenses is about right in line with where we would expect for this time of year, um, about seventy-two point five percent. That's, that's trending for about how we always are. We'll always have a little bit of savings in there. We never spend quite a hundred percent of our budget.
Okay.
Any questions on this?
So that's seventy-two percent uh, the comparison to our, to the budget, full budget.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to hit our enterprise funds. So our transfer station, we're up six hundred fifty-two thousand dollars. We wanna be up at least five hundred thousand dollars every year because we use that money to fund capital projects for the following year, you know, improvements to the facility and such. Um, so we're, we're, we're doing great in terms of transfer station revenue. Animal shelter, we are overspent by a hundred and seven, so they're losing a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars so far. A portion of that was due to some capital expenditures that we knew we were gonna spend down that fund balance a little bit. So a portion of that hundred thousand right here in capital expenditures is the reason for that. Um, but we're still watching it. Costs are a little bit higher than we had anticipated. We're having to spend more money on Quartermaster and for for the first time, we're having to buy animal feed. Normally, that's all been donated. We haven't had to pay for that. So those expenses are a little bit higher than normal. I'm not super worried about it. We do have a fund balance and then anything that's over, we will build the cities, the following year, we adjust their rate. So even though we may be out cash for six months, we collected in the end. So no, nothing really to worry about on there.
When do they pay? Is that in June?
They pay quarterly.
Oh, they do.
And then we do a reconciliation in the second quarter. So if we've saved anything, actually, no, we don't do the reconciliation for the animal shelter. We decided to build in their fund balance.
Oh.
And then the garage, um, a few years ago, I, I, I came and I was like, we're losing a hundred thousand dollars a year in our garage. And now we're making eighteen thousand dollars a year, so.
That's fantastic.
That, that one.
At least it's breaking even. That's where we.
Which is what we wanted to do. We don't, it doesn't need to make a lot of money. It just needs to cover its costs.
Yep.
Um, I talked to Sean about this. We still are having some services where it costs us way more than it would cost uh, a private firm to do it. And so we're still trying to hone those and, and I'm, I'm hoping we go out and get kind of some bids for certain types of services. So it may be that we're really good at oil changes and brakes, but we're not very good at, at engine repair. And so we wanna push those services out and just say, look, whatever it costs, that's what the department's gonna pay. Essentially, they'll pay for that service on their own. And we're gonna kind of try to narrow our focus as to what we're doing. We're having a hard time keeping mechanics. Um, and some of the work that we've been having them do is just work that we shouldn't be doing. You know, when we have enough demand for oil changes and and tires and brakes, we shouldn't be spending our time doing huge repairs on a snow blower, for example. We subbed out some of that work, some of that work we're doing ourselves. So that's it's very expensive and we likely could make more money by having those people do other services than spend their time, even though it's cheaper for the snow blower. It costs the county more in total, if that makes sense, because we can't use them now to do the other work.
Well, I'm pretty dang happy that we spent a hundred grand on a repair, the eight hundred thousand.
Definitely.
Well, Sean told me that by the first year, he'll have a breakdown of one of our meetings to show. Okay, let's, and so he's headed down that path.
Yeah, I talked to Sean.
Come up with kind of a grocery list of, hey, if it's this type of repair, ship it over here. And then we can go out and get vendors that could do it quicker and uh, and probably cheaper, maybe, but as long as it doesn't cost us more, but we're eating up a lot of time on major stuff that we're really not equipped to handle.
And the problem with that is then we have people with simple stuff that come in and it sits for, some of the complaints I hear is it's sitting for two weeks.
Right.
When it should take two hours. And so then they're going out and renting equipment or they're not able to do the work they need to do because we're spending all our time on these big projects. We're not able to get to these things we could not have quickly. Yeah, so I've, I've worked with Sean and Bill on that. We're, we're hopefully gonna come back with a proposal, but, but for now, at least it's covering its costs, which is.
And I love the, I love the fact that it's within eighteen thousand dollars over seven hundred. That's really good estimation of charge, what, the amount that we're charging.
Yeah. Which is happy with that. Which is what we wanted to do, just break even.
That's been a big, that's been big. That's been a big deal for the last several years. That's great.
Yep. Well, we've gone through some personnel issues out there and we finally, that's the right people on board. And they're working out great, so. Hey, Bill and Sean are doing amazing with that.
Yeah, yeah, and we're converting their um, software from their faster system to a web-based system that'll save us. I mean, it's not tons of money, but it's several thousand dollars a year.
Yeah.
It's going to save us and it'll be online. So it'll help us, I think, uh, just moving forward, be a little more efficient in what we're doing.
Yeah.
Um, unless you had any other questions, commissioners, that's all I had for the third quarter financial results. All in all, I think we're okay. Um, we're still cautiously optimistic that we're, everything is working out all right. We're still having supply chain issues. It still takes us forever to order an ambulance or a, a paramedic unit, um, trailers, everything like that. It just takes longer. I, I haven't seen the cancellation order for our twenty twenty-two fleet purchases yet, but I'm, I'm sure that it's coming. Um, because why, I mean, we're not gonna order a vehicle that's now two model years old, you know, it's not gonna get delivered.
No.
But we're still having those issues.
Have the trailers been delivered to the transfer station?
I don't know.
I know the trucks.
Trucks were, but I don't know if truckers have them.
We lucked out there.
Yeah. I'll follow up on the trailers to see if they've come through. I, I don't know if they've come through or not. I usually don't, I'm usually two or three weeks behind on that when I see the invoice coming.
Well, they've got, they're hauling some stuff away. I was there on Saturday and uh, that C and D that was drastically changed. It wasn't perfect, but a lot of it's.
Have they started moving up to the new pad?
I don't know that. You know, that's a good question. I didn't think, God. I didn't see anybody. It was, I was there on a Saturday. I'm thinking, oh, here we go. It's ten o'clock. I'm gonna wait for a half an hour. Nobody was there.
Really?
I couldn't believe it.
Hmm, wow.
I've never been there on a Saturday when it was that slow. In fact, I pulled in the inside. I was the only dude in there. They all were in there sitting around the fire. It was cold.
It was too cold. Everybody was smarter than you. They didn't wanna get.
Fire inside?
They had one ability.
They don't need a fire, no.
No, that's what he said.
Oh, okay. Okay, I'm assured, I'm sure. That facility hasn't burned down twice in the last.
You know, I didn't think about that, dude. Way over on this side.
Okay. Okay, so that's all I have, Commissioner.
That's it?
Yep.
I'll add one thing if that's okay.
Sure.
We um, inter- we advertised for an internal auditor position to replace Roger Larson. The pool of applicants we got were either not qualified or if they were qualified, they were asking for way higher than was listed. So we talked with you, we got some additional money. We've reposted that. We have nine applicants as of this morning. Scott and I went through them this morning and probably half of them look pretty good.
Do they? Oh, I would for sure would be, I think, really, we definitely bring them in for an interview, probably five. One's kind of on the border of they don't have quite relevant experience, but they have the education. So we'd give them a chance.
Yeah, so what we're thinking of doing is, I'm just thinking for the kind of the interview team to have Mr. Bond, Scott Park and myself. Um, but if you want to be part of that gauge, we're, we're happy to do that. We don't know yet if it's gonna be phone interviews first or just.
I'll make your word for it. Just make sure they have the same personality as who we had before.
Yeah, cuz he was.
That's all. Roger Larson was one in a million. We're gonna have a hard time replacing him. How could, how could you not love that guy?
Yeah, it's funny, cuz when he first applied, he had just applied for a similar position in Davis County and they turned him down. They didn't, they didn't offer him the job. And I talked to the auditor there and just didn't feel comfortable. And I was like, well, I'll take him. Yeah, boy, that, what a great people, fantastic.
No, he was good. And the part that he was so good, made him so good, is he had the experience coming out of private sector. And so he'd seen that side of it. So I would just say, you know, the only I guess information I'd pass on is let's make sure they have some of that private sector experience. And I mean, I like a fresh head of school, but without real life experience, I'm not sure, yeah, they fit.
Well, we want him to have experience. Roger was a unicorn in that he had private sector experience. He ran his own business and also had government experience. And so
Yeah.
He was, he, he was an awesome candidate.
Well, he had, like he said though, too, what a great guy.
Yeah.
Cuz we've had auditors here that.
Yeah. Yeah, he had a different, an auditor, he had a pretty good personality.
Yeah, we're trying to figure out how we're gonna be able to identify those soft skills. Because yeah, in the world of auditing, that's not a forte generally that, that we have.
No.
Scott's the only.
Oh, come on, you and I both started as auditors. Our personality is great.
They didn't teach you that in graduate school. They teach you not to have one.
How they take it away.
Yeah, if you come in there with a personality, they boot you out of class.
That's right.
One, one last thing to commissioners, um, we've, in the tentative budget um, for twenty twenty-four for T Tab, we have thirty-three thousand eight hundred dollars in there and that's, that's appropriate. They are not going to spend uh, twelve thousand eight hundred of their twenty twenty-three allocation and they're going to ask to have that roll over into twenty twenty-four. They just didn't award out and then one of the people they awarded money to turned their award back in and said, sorry, we're not gonna do the project. Um, and so the only reason I'm mentioning this now is because Shelley and Stacy have a meeting later this week and they wanna know what the tentative budget is. So the tentative budget is thirty-three thousand eight hundred. But if you approve the rollover of what, yeah, it would be forty-six thousand six hundred. So they wanted to know if that was something that, we can't get action on that cuz it's uh,
Right.
I mean, we're not adjusting the tentative budget or anything like that, but that's one thing they're gonna ask. So I was going to tell them both of those numbers and say, you've got thirty-three thousand eight hundred. And if the commissioners approve the rollover of the unspent twelve thousand, then you've got a total of forty-six thousand. And I just have them know that as they're accepting applications, it's starting to look to them. If you're okay with that, commissioners?
Yeah, okay, we've always let it roll over, Sean.
We, we always have in the past.
You're okay with the rollover?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we're okay with that.
All right. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks, Scott. Appreciate it.
Oh, I will say, I was invited to present a panel on a best practices for ERP implementations for big financial.
ERP.
Enterprise resource planning. It's like the HR munis.
HR accounting software.
Yeah.
Counting.
HR and account.
Yeah, okay.
So I did that presentation last Friday. It was a two-hour webinar. Uh, there were two hundred fifty people across the country. It was run out of Boston. Well, Oracle was on there. I Bailey. Um, so it was pretty cool, but uh, the only reason why they asked me and the only reason why it was successful is because I asked Scott, hey, help me answer all these questions. Because I don't know them. And uh, so they we had great feedback from the session. Wow, you guys really are ahead of the game. You had such good thoughts and and it was all Scott's answers. I was just, in fact, I almost told them to just have him present.
He was whispering in your ear.
Yeah, I, I should have, but well, we talked to the day before and prepped, so. Anyway, so.
You know, Ricky, the mark of a great leader is he surrounds himself with people who can take his place. And you've got Stephanie, you've got Scott and you've got some others there. Attaboy, way to go.
Yeah, they're fantastic. We've got a good team.
Got a great team, Larry. Get really good. Okay, thanks, Scott. Steph, thank you. Get some food before you go.
It's a lot.
You, you may wanna put it through the microwave. It's a little chilly in here.
Oh, yeah, but.
No, frozen was on you.
Chiller.
This room is more than the rest of our.
This is.
So.
It's probably a little.
Very mild.
Hey, guys, Gary, how we doing?
Good to see you, Ricky.
We're doing good.
Oh, man, I don't think those plates are bigger than.
I know. Well, I'll take two. One for your salad.
You, I didn't mind that.
It's funny, everyone in their coats. I know, I, I need to really wear a jacket for reaction. I like that. I had my spare jacket on earlier.
Is the whole building cold or just the third floor?
It's the whole building.
Is it?
Well, not there.
What do we, what do we do? Gary, lose that boiler or what?
Oh, yeah, so that's what I, I heard there was a leak in one of the line.
Whatever it is, they're not gonna try to fix it.
Well, they were working on it.
No, is it?
It's fixed.
Was it?
It was a ring.
A ring.
No, look at my office that.
It had just a little flat side to it and that was allowing a leak. I'm fixing now. He said that it should be starting to kick on now. That was twenty minutes ago.
Ashley, how you doing?
I'm doing great. How are you all today?
Yeah.
Keep moving around to stay warm. Keep the blood going.
Just keep moving around. Hey, this is nothing. Come up to Huntsville, what was fourteen degrees yesterday, this morning.
Was it really that chilly?
Yeah.
It was only twenty-eight, I know, man. I'm sure it was freaking my hair.
Yeah. Yeah, it was plenty chilly. All right, let's start our, uh, one of PM discussion regarding the fairways drive extension designs contract. Shyne Wilkinson's not here. Gary Myers is here. J H New Horn's here. Brooke Stewart's here and Ashley Tolman, so.
Ashley, you gonna take this?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll get it started and um, what we wanna discuss with you is we've been given a grant from WACOG to extend Fairways Drive, which is essentially the road that comes over the divide and becomes forty-one hundred north. And then the plan is to extend that all the way to the highway that goes up to Powder Mountain. So we've been given this grant money. This is a project that we've worked with. Um, John Lewis had done some work already for the design and, and helped get that land dedicated as right of way.
Right.
And so now we're looking to complete the design and put it out to bid. And um, what we wanted to discuss was using the engineering firm that kind of did all the preliminary work and got it to the point it's at now to finish this work. Um, and back in twenty sixteen, they put in about twenty-six thousand dollars worth of engineering, about ten thousand dollars worth of surveying, which we'd like to make the suggestion or proposal that that's still all relevant work. That if we were to put this out to a general bid to get an engineering firm to design it, we would have to re-spend that money. And so.
Who paid for that work?
That was paid for by John Lewis.
Okay.
He had that engineering firm work on that and put that together.
Okay.
So.
And then so the that work's still relevant, then?
Yes, yeah, it's still relevant, still applicable. And so we asked for a estimate of what it would cost to finish the work. And that's about uh, thirty-six thousand two hundred dollars to finish the design. And then they have thirteen thousand six hundred dollars to get it through the, the bid process. Um, some of that, we think we can lower, uh, I think some of what they proposed, we won't need their help to evaluate bids. We have um, ourselves and Jason Horn to do that work. And so we won't need to rely on the engineering firm to, to do that. And so uh, what we're proposing is that we enter into a contract with uh, Gardner Engineering to complete this work. And, and I don't know that we're asking for a decision on going with Gardner. We, I think we're gonna take this to a county commission meeting to make that request. We just wanna see if you're all right with us moving forward with Gardner um, as opposed to putting out to a public bid.
Yeah, you said that's your department.
Yeah, so Ashley reviewed this with me, I think a couple of weeks ago. Under normal circumstances, I would have him rebid it, but the fact that the information that they pulled from twenty sixteen is still relevant.
That's what I like.
It's gonna cost us probably double to have another firm come in and do essentially the same thing over again. So in the best interest of the county, I don't see any reason to re-spend that money and more. Um, so we're totally covered from an ordinance standpoint, and I think this makes the most sense. So I'm good with that.
And time wise. Right? If somebody else new comes to the table, they're gonna spend a lot of time getting up to speed on where, where Gardner's already ready to hit the ground running.
Kind of common sense.
Makes sense.
Okay.
So well, if you are all right with that, sounds like you are.
Okay.
Brooke, do you wanna?
So now, so let's talk about forty one hundred. You know, we've talked about that for at least two to three years. We've got funding in place for that, right?
We do. That was a twenty twenty one application. So those funds are programmed for twenty twenty four. So they're available now, but technically in January. Um, and so when they put the application, we knew all of this work was already pre-existing. It was part of their local match towards the project. So those funds are there available and we always just defer to the entity for their procurement procedures. So that would be you.
True. Well, that's, that's a much needed road. It takes a lot of, gives another access off of that crowded area around Wool Creek and will take some pressure off of even the people going to Powder Mountain and yeah.
But even from an emergency management perspective, right? I mean, if there's another fire or who knows what.
No, makes sense.
Just access is just a much better deal.
And so we've, we've kind of line, tried to line up the timing with UDOT replacing the bridge over North Fork.
Right.
That's a project that we will believe will be taking place this next year. We, when we talked to UDOT about extending fairways, they wanted us to wait um, to add any more traffic to that bridge until, you know, don't extend the road until that bridge is replaced. So.
Yep.
We're think, we think our time's good to get it going. Um, the engineering firm Gardner Engineering believes they can have the bid documents ready in March or April to put this out to bid and then kinda get construction started next summer.
When will the bridge be done? So it'll go under construction fall of next year.
Okay.
Right now is what they're planning on. And depending on what they find, we're thinking probably six months or so, they can probably have that deck wrapped up and done. They thought they were gonna be able to use the original abutment still. Um, when we uncover those, we'll see just what kinda condition they're in. You can only explore so much until you pull the old deck off. So. But yeah, timing should work out perfectly. Well, good. So speaking of bridges, I happened to run into Harz's old buddy Scott's story the other day.
Oh.
After he got through yelling at me about property tax, he said that we've got two or three bridges in the valley that are basically uh, hazard because they're not uh, they're not suitable. He thinks they're uh, short of failing. And he talked about the one around River Drive and one other I, you know, so I, I mean, I drive on them occasionally. Are they that bad?
They're not great. So one of them that I'm sure he's referring to is the forty one hundred North Bridge.
Um, probably is.
Yeah, every year we get a list of our bridge ratings.
Okay.
Um, from you.
From you, Doc.
From you, Doc. We do.
Yeah.
And the, the challenge is in a road system, a bridge is probably the most expensive portion of any road, road ever, right? Like exponentially more so. They're over, especially the ones over the North Fork River. That's kind of a tricky river. Because half the year it's dry. You know, I mean, literally that's what it comes down to. But then the other half, it can go from dry to a raging crazy river, right? So you have to plan for the worst.
Yeah.
You have to plan for the biggest, highest flows.
Yeah.
And quite frankly, um, we've kinda talked about our B and C road friends, funds a little bit with you guys previously. Uh, we, we just, it's like a losing battle every year with our road funding. So um, where does it make sense to spread the money to take it the furthest? Obviously the roads. Uh, the bridges do take a bit of a beating, but I wouldn't say they're uh, failing yet. The, the, the one that concerned me the most was the forty one hundred North Bridge and that one's in process.
Okay.
The other ones are not amazing. I'm not gonna lie to you and tell you that they're super great, but I still drive across them and I'm still thinking we're, we're just fine. I mean, as, as it is all summer long, there's full, fully loaded construction traffic using those bridges on a daily basis multiple times a day. So we wish they were better.
I'm assuming you dot, where they do their annual inspections would tell us if they're
Yeah.
to the point of.
If it was a hazard, they would tell us, close the bridge.
Okay.
Right? And we're not there yet. So, but they're not, they could be better. Absolutely. So.
They could call Scott. I didn't know that.
Can you, can you explain to me?
And they, you dot does their review inspection and we update the load rating stickers as they advise us.
Sure.
So they, they make that assessment and, and let us know if that should change and send us the stickers and our roads department guys put those up and.
Yep, and we're good. Okay. All right. Perfect. All right, what else? That is all.
We're just happy to be here.
Brooke, anything else?
All right. Settle down.
I just gotta listen.
Okay, is that it for you guys?
Yeah.
Wow.
You sure you have fourteen minutes?
Yeah, you've got, you've got fourteen minutes.
We're just that efficient, you guys. Wow. I like that. You guys get style points.
Well, is your sheriff coming at one thirty?
Well, my sheriff's deeper. Why now?
Well, find out.
Anything else you need to tell us about anywhere else around here? Tell me about sixty two twenty five going into Wasatch Drive in Uena. You guys were gonna build some curb out.
Thanks, Jason.
Ah. You're that dude. You're preempting my phone call to the.
About what?
So.
Doubt in my neck of the woods. How, you're unincorporated in the south.
What's it been? A couple of months since that incident? When the fatality occurred. So we actually went up and set up our radar counters, which give us a couple of things. It gives us traffic numbers, classifies what size the vehicles are that are using the road, and then it tells us the speeds. That road is posted as a twenty five mile an hour. When we ran our counts, our, our study, we got the, the eighty fifth percentile number as thirty three miles an hour, which quite frankly is pretty darn good. And I don't know if the eighty fifth percentile means anything to you, but generally that's how speeds are set, is on the eighty fifth percentile of what the speeds of the road are. Now, obviously, a lot of times we can do studies on our eighty fifth percentile comes back higher than what the posted speed limit is. We don't always have to raise our speed limits. But, but, but the Ashtoe uh, publication allows us to govern signing for roads, does allow us to go by what the eighty fifth percentile speeds are. So um, anyway, thirty three's not bad. We did have one outlier that was like fifty five miles an hour. Um, and, and quite honestly, whenever we put those counters, those, those radar sensors up, we do get outliers. That's not uncommon to see a crazy goofy number like that. It doesn't tell us what the vehicle was though. Keep in mind, it's just a data point that says a vehicle's going a certain direction and the speed that it's going. For all we know, it could have been a police officer, could have been an ambulance, fire truck, who knows what. And I'm not suggesting that they do stuff on the safe or it could have been.
It could have been a jogger.
Jogger. Jim, were you out jogging?
Sometimes after I dunked, after I dunked it over at the school. Cool off, yeah.
Or it could have been some knucklehead on a motorcycle that, you know, you never know.
Knucklehead.
Knucklehead. That's the nice way of putting it.
But anyway, so you do get a few of those.
You do get some outliers. So we did get the.
So eighty two percent with thirty three per, thirty three mile an hour.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which really feels pretty darn good, I'll be honest with you.
So are you gonna do anything there or no?
So uh, that's a discussion we need to have with you guys to see if you do want to have us do anything there. One of the suggestions we discussed is what we call a bulb out.
Yeah, that's it.
Where we, where we knock the curb and gutter out into the road. Um, and if that's something we wanted to do, we certainly could.
Horribly expensive, are they?
They're not. Yeah, um, so the biggest challenge I have with those commissioner is uh, drainage. Because the minute you pull that curb and gutter away from where it should be, it creates a natural pocket where water will wanna collect.
What about snow plowing on those bulb out?
So as long as the guys know about them, they can accommodate them.
Okay. So it's just, they do get humming there because that's right there by Skyline and it, it, the traffic goes, they come hurrying through there.
Yeah, yeah, people.
Uh, speakers?
Uh huh, yeah. You wish, you wish you could communicate that. I mean, how many times do we see Utah Highway Patrol telling people, slow down, drive the speed limit, right? And it's no different. I was talking with uh, Detective Alex Slater from our, from our group. And he made a point. He said, you know, we're kinda to a point now where most people's vehicles have a lot of power. And um, all the old cars are kinda gone, right? Most of the newer ones have a lot of power, can really move when they want to. And sometimes aren't thinking
Yeah, I can actually feel the heat.
I actually felt a little heat come down.
So cool.
All right, Sheriff, we're here at one thirty meeting to talk about your update.
Hey.
Time is yours.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Appreciate your time.
Little earlier than normal.
Yeah, I think whoever manages your calendar is pretty. Observant to see that probably didn't have much, just decided to move me up.
Yeah.
Help with that, so. Um, just a couple of things by way of calendar. Let's see, uh, Teletown Hall Thursday night.
That's this week.
Yep.
Yep.
Second, is that gonna be at your place?
Yes, and then Friday night, we're having a jail tour. And right now, we've got about sixty people.
Wow, seriously?
From.
Really? That's the one you opened to the public.
Yes.
Sixty?
Six oh.
Wow.
And then Mayor Cutler from uh, Yewinta uh, invite huh? We go. He invited me out Friday to his um. Staff meeting to do a quick presentation, which ironically, I think he had more than half of the city council members there. And on the 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 expansion, it's all good questions, they all supported.
This past Friday?
We invited it for this morning, so I went out with Chief Reese this morning.
Oh, you've been out there?
Yeah, and uh, they said, yeah, we support it and they like the what we're doing.
Didn't know Gordon got up on Monday morning, that's really nice news in the law.
He he does, he he does get up.
Was it four eleven o'clock?
It was at ten o'clock, yes, he was he was there. Um, and it was obvious, uh, there's a couple of. Uh. Uh, Facebook questions um, that we had and and those were repeated this morning. And the ones that Jessica helped with, and so I'm pretty sure that's where they came from.
These are questions?
Well, yeah, kinda, not really, I don't think, but uh, but the question is, why are we building a facility? Uh, when we don't have uh, staffing, but it's they're they're more jabs than that.
Yeah, right.
When we built Twelfth Street, uh, you can imagine that takes a whole lot of employees. We went from what we had downtown, Twelfth Street, you can imagine the staffing need from that. You know, when we had to build that facility, I mean, uh, talk with Chief Reese, he remembers uh. They had to hire a lot of people to get ready for that building. But we don't need more staffing, we're we're actually gonna use less staffing when we move from Kiesel to that new facility. And so uh, and so we explained staffing level, we had a very large group go through the academy in pass. It was about fifteen people. And so uh, about six weeks ago, seven weeks ago, or months ago, we were about forty-three down in the jail. We're only down seventeen now, and then we got another uh, group going into the academy, about eight or nine. So I mean, we're doing pretty good.
That's good.
Wow.
So these people that are saying this, yeah, so these people that are saying this stuff, they're just. They're idiots, they're they they're just stirring stuff up because of, you know, I have reasons for it.
It's the way they do it.
But they're out of tune, they don't know, and and what's funny is is the information's out there, but as you. As campaign veterans that we are, people do not read information.
No.
They don't, they don't take the time, uh, but of that small handful. I I don't know what it is, but we are just not seeing uh, negativity. We're not seeing an aggressive or assertive or any amount of. From any, no cities, no city leaders, nothing.
No, no uh, formal.
Nothing.
Action, negative, okay.
Yeah, and then someone said, I'll just wait till the ballots go out, then you'll see it, we're not even seeing warm up, we're not seeing anything.
Hmm. And I see, can I interject for a second? The nice thing is, is as we see that, and even with these questions that have been just sort of jabs, like the sheriff said.
Yeah, they're all former employees.
They, we've had the opportunity to go that answer their questions that really aren't intended as questions. And put it out for people who are reading that.
Yes.
To get the information. So Jessica's done really nice. Pulling straight from the from the master website, everything straight from there.
Alright.
And it gives us the ability at least to put some information out there for those who happen to be following, so it's not a bad thing.
No, no. You're raising to put out truthful information.
Yeah.
It is truthful and and I was telling Jessica the other day, I says, we didn't run to Jessica and say, hey, these guys are just. Didn't tell her in the background, we just gave her the information and she just, as the professional she was, is just answering the question. You know, because, you know, a lot of us would wanna say, well, listen, hear you, blinkety blinky. But you know, and then after she answered it, I I filled her on the backstory, but it was.
Hmm.
Uh, some some former employees that because they didn't get promoted, left sour, it's, you know, we could, it's okay.
Hmm.
It's just the way it is.
Fair, interesting.
Nothing was promised them anyway. That's the thing, we do not promise anybody anything.
Yeah.
But, oh, but it's good.
Way in the world anymore, Sheriff.
Uh, you guys have been uh, very good about supporting us, thank you. And Commissioner Bolos has been very, very supportive, I know you guys haven't seen what she's doing. But she's been to just about everything she can, as you two would expect. So in your conversations with other people, if anybody says, what are you commissioners are doing? You can say, Commissioner Bolos is on the ground with us.
Absolutely.
Watching, participating, knowing what we're doing. And she can also return report that uh, my wife owns me, just so you know, she got that question.
The question, I just gave the answer, I thought it was right, does his wife own him? Said, I think, I would guess so.
Yeah.
We actually both were just sitting in the corner at the Teletown Hall, the two of us were just observing, watching these guys crazy panic. I do have one thought that might bring down that level of crazy, I know, a serious one.
Well, you're experts at it now, so.
That's true.
This will be a lot easier when the last.
Yes, yeah. Um, nothing else other than report, though, um, thank you for uh. You know, as you know, that we got, when you guys asked us to sweep all our corners, we did, and we returned and reported that we did for the budget. Um, and I wanna be able to help support you guys, if I can in any way with what you guys are doing on the budget. In your public meetings or whatever, just let me know, I will be able to help you guys, whatever, just let me know what I can do.
Well, you might wanna be there on the twenty eighth.
So, sure. So.
You know, it'll it'll be kind of the type of crap that comes out for those, which is.
Well.
Some of it's on misinformation and.
Well, I'll tell you what, Scott Park said, I can't remember if I shared this with you, Scott Park came over to our office. The other day to interpret what all this was gonna happen, uh, as far as like uh, colas and.
Yeah.
And raises, and he made a comment that I haven't heard in a long time, but he says, people forget. That the public requests and asks the county government for services. And this is what is being delivered, somebody has to pay for them. And you guys can easily say, at the end of the day, we've done everything we can to sweep our corners and make sure we're not throwing any money away. Right? You're losing staff, we all are.
Uh huh.
Right? To the to the to the public, right? And this is what you guys have to do, I I I support you, so I just want you to know that.
Thank you, yeah, we'll get through it, it's, nobody likes tax increases, I mean, that just. It's kind of the way it is, nobody likes, I don't like it, but if you're gonna have services, we have to pay for it. You know, I don't like paying four dollars and fifty cents a gallon for gas, but you know, if I wanna run my car, I've gotta do it, so. Sometimes you don't have options.
It's true.
We do have options, I guess I could.
Why?
Why?
Active transportation's nice.
Yeah. Well, thanks, Sheriff.
Yeah, but other, no, other than uh, reporting, I don't know what else, right now, we're just focused on the activities. As you know, ballots go out tomorrow, and then the twenty first is it, so we're just kinda making sure we get the message out, answering questions, but.
I think the next two or three weeks will be very important in terms of the outcome.
Yep.
That's when people, seriously, this is when people start painted, when that ballot hits, they go, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Not all of them.
Um, we had our first uh, letter or. Mailer go out, the second one should be in mailboxes today and tomorrow. And then I was told the pit group, uh, their theirs should be landing probably uh, Thursday or Friday.
Okay.
So it's supposed to be designed between when the ballots, when our second one hit in the. And then and right after the ballots, get the box, so they turned it sandwiched.
Sure.
Good. And then uh, Kevin Johnson called me up and said uh, some anonymous donor gave him three or five grand. So he's been hustling up a bunch of videos from uh, some local celebrities. Uh, mayors, Randy Watt, people like that, and then just the average public person saying, I'm just your average public, I wanna pay. And so.
Is he doing any but, is he doing any that were some of the people who spoke at the public hearing?
I.
We talked about that.
I don't know the names, he told me he's got people.
You know, I'm talking about people who were up there saying, I.
Like the mayor's.
Family member of mine.
Oh, I know Porter's in one of them, and Paul Wells in one.
Oh.
Watt and I and me, and I don't know the others, but he says he's got just, not that they're nobodies, but you know how sometimes when they're all mayors, it's like.
Yeah, yeah.
Just common folk, for lack of a better term.
Yeah, no, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
But I think the people who can tell a personal story, those are effective.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree.
Hope he's got some of those.
But again, I'm not, I don't get involved with the pit group, so that's, and he's doing it on his own.
The what group?
The pick, it's the public, public. Information cause or something like that, it's a registered group through the, through the Lieutenant Governor's Office.
See.
Stokes got this going.
Stokes set it up.
Yeah, and uh, Joe Cofer's running it with Bob Hunter and a group of people. And they did some fundraising, and I hear bits and pieces about what's going on with it.
Fair.
So they've got, they've raised quite a bit of money, I hear, and just some good people that believe in this, so.
That's great.
And they've uh, as with any other person in the public, uh, they would uh, would request information, we give it to them, right? And so they requested information from me on occasion, so.
Well, we got a good separation there, it sounds like.
Yes.
What we needed.
Yep, so yeah.
Neat, okay, what else?
Nothing.
That's it? Wow.
I've got some good jokes I've heard lately, but if this wasn't recorded, I'll tell you something.
Seventeen minutes.
Seventeen, but who's counting?
Stokes got this going.
Stokes set it up.
Yeah, and uh, Joe Cofer's running it with Bob Hunter and a group of people. And they did some fundraising, and I hear bits and pieces about what's going on with it.
Fair.
So they've got, they've raised quite a bit of money, I hear, and just some good people that believe in this, so.
That's great.
And they've uh, as with any other person in the public, uh, they would uh, would request information, we give it to them, right? And so they requested information from me on occasion, so.
Well, we got a good separation there, it sounds like.
Yes.
What we needed.
Yep, so yeah.
Neat, okay, what else?
Nothing.
That's it? Wow.
I've got some good jokes I've heard lately, but if this wasn't recorded, I'll tell you something.
Seventeen minutes.
Seventeen, but who's counting?
I've got some good jokes I've heard lately, but if this wasn't recorded, I'll tell you something. As with any other person in the public, uh, they would uh, would request information, we give it to them, right? And so they requested information from me on occasion, so.
Well, we got a good separation there, it sounds like.
Yes.
It's what we needed.
Yep, so yeah.
Neat, okay, what else?
Nothing.
That's it? Wow.
I've got some good jokes I've heard lately, but if this wasn't recorded, I'll tell you something.
Seventeen minutes.
Seventeen, but who's counting?
Sheriff's office is good right now, based on everything, you got a lot going on. So we had a, we had a, a town hall and a. A father and brother of employee came in and chewed me out one side the other.
Father and brother of an employee.
Yeah. And it was just out of place, and then the other people that were there chewed them out, chewed me out. And it was just out of place, they came down there and and so Reese was there with me and reminded me. He did a survey and seventy plus percent were fine with the morale there.
Hmm.
But you have to consider our field. When you, when you're in a closed in, darkened area, twelve hours a day, right? In sequential days, two days, two on, three, two on, two off, three on, three off, you get worked up, right? And it's, and it's.
Tough duty.
It's, sometimes when you're in that funk, it's always somebody else's problem when you're not happy.
Uh huh.
And uh, this parent or this father and and his brother came in and told, uh, Chief Perry was there also too. And he says, you guys have almost done nothing since you've been in office, and then Chief Perry says.
Hmm.
You know, I I'm gonna say something, Sheriff, do you mind? He goes, I wanna take some exception to that, since we've been in office. Uh, your commissioners, Jessica was there, right? Your commissioners have done more for this county, and your sheriff, they've done raises. Uh, we went from like seventeen dollars an hour for starting wage up to twenty-five, yeah, and 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 just laid it out there. And and they just, you know, had that look like, uh, like, like their own son wasn't telling them, this is the good stuff.
Yeah.
But they have a son, it's just, uh, we know who he is, he's just a perpetual, everything's negative.
Yeah.
So they took it upon a chance to come down and blame everything on morale, and it's like. Uh, yeah, there's always the few, so.
Yeah, no, you can't eliminate those.
I suppose it wasn't, I hadn't heard any of that, thanks for sharing, but I'm glad to know that seventy percent's a good number.
Yeah, especially in a jail.
Yeah, for sure.
Yes, that's, that's as good as I've heard in thirty years.
So, yeah, Reese was just telling me that, but uh, this new group of fifteen that came in, there is something different about them. It's oddly kind of weird, cuz uh, seriously, they all seem um. For those that you understand this, they're almost like return missionary like weird. Meaning not weird as a negative, but they just seem real positive in life, cuz usually when you have people come into the jail. It's like they just seem kinda like they got an edge to them, and they're just looking for a job, they all seem very high spirited. And like, and the chief and I both agreed that you may need to put them with the right people to train them, don't just throw them in with those. That group, right, that's trusty, right?
Hmm.
So, yeah, we got a good bunch, right?
Great, that's, that's good, hopefully they'll rub off in the right way.
So, anyway.
Good, appreciate that, Sheriff.
Lot of good work out there, thanks for everything.
Keep it up.
Chiefs, they work their tails off.
Yeah, they do, oh, yeah. Absolutely.
Everything that goes on out there, I just, I try to make their staff meetings, I don't always, but just the amount of work that you get to deal with and issues and.
Yeah, I think we'll be able to breathe after the bond a little bit, so.
Commissioner Bolos is very complimentary, she does report frequently about those things that she's experienced, and it's good.
Yes, really good, we're lucky to have her and and all those that come out, so, yes. So when this bond's over, please expect not to see me for at least two to three years, I mean month, I mean.
Days.
I told him to leave town.
I'd get out of, I'd get out on the first bus out of town, or plane.
Have something planned.
All right, looks like we're in our break session, I'd take a motion that we saunter until three P M.
Motion to saunter till three. Till three?
Three P M, our next one.
Have some administrative, so yeah.
Yeah, three P M it is, those won't be, uh.
Yep, that's true.
All right, all in favor, say aye, aye, most carriers, we're now sauntering until, not that anybody's even on here today.
Lot or property? Where is it? It's on one of the big, large curves, as you can tell on the Old Snow Basin.
Oh.
It is two miles up from the intersection of Old Snow Basin Road and Highway Thirty-nine, two miles up Old Snow Basin Road is this lot. Um, the gentleman's name is Timothy Boyle, he has a well, culinary water well for the home.
Is there a home there?
Yes.
Okay.
There's a home and the well has gone dry, completely dry, so he.
Hmm.
Is in need, obviously, and so he was at the health department, he's been working with the health department, he's identified. Some locations for some well sites, this one that you see that has a circle on it is the best. Okay. Um, that's the best location according to his well driller. And so when he was at the health department the other day, this happened Friday, and so good for him. There's a slight cancellation on your agenda today, so I was able to put this item on to just inform you that Timothy Boyle would like to request from you. Um, at some point in the future, a well protection zone easement. And so as you can see, it leaves his property and goes out into the Old Snow Basin Road right of way. It basically takes up a lane and a half or almost two full lanes.
Sure.
Um, I talked to Courtland about this, Courtland had some very good questions, having to do with what type of restrictions. The easement would place on the road and how it might restrict the county from doing those obvious things that the county needs to do to maintain. Build, construct, do whatever it needs to do to a road.
Well, is that up to us to do the easement? I thought that was state.
Uh, well, the underlying. Good question, the underlying owner, it was a state road at one time, there were some agreements, this is, I think.
Good, appreciate that, Sheriff.
Lot of good work out there, thanks for everything.
Keep it up.
Chiefs, they work their tails off.
Yeah, they do, oh, yeah. Absolutely.
Everything that goes on out there, I just, I try to make their staff meetings, I don't always, but just the amount of work that you can still with and issues and.
Yeah, I think we'll be able to breathe after the bond a little bit, so.
Commissioner Bolos has been very complimentary, she does report frequently, uh, about those things that she's experienced, isn't it good?
Yes, really good, we're lucky to have her and, and all those that come out, so, yes. So, and this bond's over, please expect not to see me for at least two to three years, I mean, month, I mean.
Days.
I told him to leave town.
I'd get out of, I'd get out on the first bus out of town, or plane.
Have something planned.
All right, looks like we're in our break session, I'd take a motion that we saunter until three P M.
Motion to saunter till three.
Till three?
Three P M, our next one.
Have some administrative, so, yeah.
Yeah, three P M it is. Those won't be, uh.
Yep, that's true.
All right, all in favor, say aye, aye, motion carries, we're now sauntering until, not that anybody's even on hand today.
Lot or property, where is it? It's on one of the big, large curves, as you can tell on the old Silver Basin.
Oh.
It is two miles up from the intersection of Old Silver Basin Road and Highway Thirty-nine. Two miles up, Old Silver Basin Road is this lot. Um, the gentleman's name is Timothy Boyle, he has a well, culinary water well for the home.
Is there a home there?
Yes.
Okay.
There's a home, and the well has gone dry, completely dry, so he
Hmm.
is in need, obviously, and so he was at the health department, he's been working with the health department, he's identified some locations for some well sites, this one that you see that has a circle on it is the best.
Oh, my goodness.
Okay. Um, that's the best location according to his well driller. And so, when he was at the health department the other day, this happened Friday, and so good for him, there's a slight cancellation on your agenda today, so I was able to put this item on to just inform you that Timothy Boyle would like to request from you, um, at some point in the future, a well protection zone easement. And so, as you can see, it leaves his property and goes out into the older basin road right of way. It basically takes up a lane and a half or almost two full lanes.
Sure.
Um, I talked to Cortland about this, Cortland had some very good questions, having to do with what type of restrictions the easement would place on the road, and how it might restrict the county from doing those obvious things that the county needs to do to maintain, build, construct, do whatever it needs to do to a road.
Well, is that up to us to do the easement? I thought that was state.
Uh, well, the underlying, good question, the underlying owner, it was a state road at one time, there were some agreements, this is, I think, this is a dedicated road up this high, and I think it is dedicated to the county.
It is?
I believe that there is a road dedication plan, how far it goes from forest down, from my view, I don't remember exactly.
So where's his existing well?
Uh, I don't, oh, yes, it is, right there in that point, see the point on the adjacent property?
Sure.
It's in the lighter pink.
Oh, okay.
That is his existing well that's gone dry.
Okay.
The one with the blue circle is the proposed location.
Okay.
Uh, the easement that the health department, well, the health, health department said, you know what, with us, it's fine, but when an easement leaves your property, you need to go to the
Yeah.
uh, adjacent landowner and request an easement. Uh, here's an idea about what the language, so this is a form easement, so to speak, that came from the health department. This is what they handed him to hand to other owner or an adjacent landlord to request the owner to sign it, but it says here, basically, in this case, Weaver County hereby grants a well protection easement to Weaver Morgan Health Department, so it grant, this easement is granted to the health department, not to Timothy. Uh, grantee, let's see, the terms of this easement are to comply with regulatory law requirements, ordinances, and policies administered by the health department for the protection of drinking water related to culinary wells in the state of Utah, and provide the separation from a culinary water well from concentrated sources of pollution. This is, uh, the paragraph that Cortland was, uh, asking questions about. The sources of pollution are described as, but not limited to, septic tanks, septic drain fields, garbage dumps, livestock corrals, feedlots, hazardous waste storage, or other sources of pollutants deemed inappropriate under the regulatory authority of the health department. So Cortland asks, what are other sources of pollutants, and obviously, how could this impact the county's right to
Yeah.
work on a road? So we called, um, the health department, do you remember? What they said, what they did do for us was they sent us an example of a letter that the county has given them in the past, so the county has done this before.
Hmm.
I'm not exactly sure where.
Then.
I'm not positive, but this letter came from property management back in two thousand twelve. It must, must have to do with property oh, at eighty-eight twenty-two E six hundred south, so in the Huntsville area. Uh, this is a letter that the county wrote coming from Department of Operations in two thousand twelve. An easement was granted, however, this accompanied the easement, I do believe, it says, Dear Mr. Dalton, you recently requested permission to allow your proposed well protection zone on property located at eight twenty-two E six hundred south to extend into the Weaver County right of way. Upon review of the proposed site plan, Weaver County would be willing to allow your well protection zone to the extent, uh, to extend into Weaver County right of way, as long as you understand that Weaver County's primary concern is maintenance of this road. It will be necessary from time to time to maintain this roadway, chip sealing, overlays, salting, sanding, snow plowing, et cetera. To the extent that these activities may have adverse, adverse impacts on your proposed well protection zone, Weaver County will not be responsible for any adverse impacts. By using this letter to help document or justify your applications for favorable consideration of well permits, septic tank permits, building permits, or any other state of Utah or local permits required by law, you agree to hold Weaver County harmless for any adverse impacts associated with reasonable customary and road maintenance in this general area. So Timothy Boyle's request to you eventually, there would be, you know, we would present this to you in a commission meeting, if you're willing to consider it, uh, would be a restrictive easement, I don't know if council or the attorneys would want a different form than this.
Yeah, I would want something like these restrictions added into the easement to make sure that we have the right to maintain our road.
Yeah, I don't want it on a separate letter.
Right, that, I'm not sure that holds water, so I would, I would want that written into the easement.
Exactly.
But other, I mean, if we preserve that right to do whatever we need to with the road, and that's part of the easement document, I don't think I would have any concern with it.
Damn.
So.
So is this just Weaver County property we're talking about on our?
Yeah, it's a road right of way.
Yeah, but he, he owns the rest of the property?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, this is a parcel with a home on it. Uh, the wells run dry, and so he's relocating it, and, and that's the location, you can see how that, that easement protection zone goes out into the road.
I didn't even think the other day to ask about the actual ownership of the road, but whether or not that's dedicated right of way.
I think it is, two miles up, I know there is a dedication plan, I just don't remember how far that comes, I think it begins at the forest line.
I can't remember where that ends either, so we need to check and see if that's actually our ground or state, I'm assuming it's ours, but I'm not su, we need to look at that plan.
Great question, it's possible that if it is state, then it could just be a different agreement between the county and the state for maintenance only.
That's, well, I, I know that that was the original agreement with the state, is that, that we would take ownership after a certain point, but then we'd agree to do the maintenance.
Mm-hmm.
It basically became our road for maintenance, but it didn't necessarily become our road fee simple, so we just need to verify that.
Okay, if we're able to verify that the county uh, is the right entity to approach for, for an easement, we can present that to you again, but, uh, if that is the case, are you willing to consider it if we come to a commission meeting and?
I'm, I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I agree with Cortland a hundred percent, I don't want it on a separate letter.
Right.
That needs, that needs to be part of the recorded document.
Okay. Okay, the next time that.
And as long as he's comfortable, but I, the language, I mean, Cortland can tweak it how we need to, I mean, that's the language we need in there.
Right.
Just so he understands, look, we're gonna run snowplows, we're gonna put salt, we're gonna chip and seal, you know, this is what's gonna happen on it. If you're not comfortable with that, then change the location of your well.
Okay. All right, yeah, if you're willing to consider it, we'll do all, we'll do that work, come back with something more appropriate, and we'll check ownership.
I like it.
Okay, easy, thank you.
Thanks, folks. All right, that concludes our work for the day, Commissioner.
Really?
Yeah, we're in good shape. Sean, unless you had anything else, Portland?
Uh, probably after the meeting ends, just, uh.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, me as well.
One thing that's mentioned to you, so.
Okay, well, we're, good motion to adjourn.
I moved.
Second, all those in favor, we're now adjourned, thank you for being with us today, for.